Good evening, I would like to call this meeting to order. This is the November eighteenth, twenty twenty-five, meeting of the Shrewsbury Select Board. We will start with introducing board and staff members present. I am Teresa Flynn.
Beth Cassavant.
Carlos Garcia.
Michelle Conlin.
And Mr. Richards. Oh, Greg Richards, I just wanted to confirm you're present and that you can hear us. That seems so clear.
I can.
Great, thank you.
Kevin Mizikar, Town Manager.
Keith Baldinger, Assistant Town Manager, Operations.
Juanita Anderson, Executive Assistant.
Great, thank you. So, given that Mr. Richards is participating remotely, each vote will be taken by roll-call vote this evening. First item on our agenda is to approve the bills, payrolls, and warrants.
Move approval?
Second.
Ms. Cassavant?
Aye.
Ms. Conlin?
Aye.
Mr. Garcia?
Aye.
Mr. Richards?
Aye.
Myself, aye, so voted. Item number two is to act, excuse me, is to review and act to approve the minutes of the October twenty-second, twenty twenty-five special town meeting, October four, uh, our meeting at special town meeting, October fourteenth, twenty twenty-five meeting, and October twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five meeting.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I was absent due to a family emergency on October twenty-eighth, so I will be abstaining from that one.
I was also absent, so I would abstain as well, although I think we can approve, but, since we watched it, but at any rate, um...
I'd just like to note that on the October twenty-eighth minutes, the who made the motions and who seconded the motions needs to be corrected. Other than that, I'm fine with them, so I move that we approve the minutes.
Second.
Ms. Cassavant?
Aye.
Mr. Garcia?
Aye.
Mr. Richards?
Aye.
Okay, and two extensions, motion passes. Item number thirteen is announcements and reports. Do any board members have any announcements or reports this evening? Ms. Conlin?
I have two announcements. The first is from the Assessor's Office. If you are a veteran with at least ten percent service-connected disability, if you are over sixty-five with limited income and assets, if you are a widow or widower with limited cash assets, if you are legally blind with a certificate from the Commission for the Blind, or if you are a longtime resident with limited income and assets, you may be eligible for one of our real estate tax relief programs. Stop by the Assessor's Office, call five zero eight eight four one eight five zero one, or email assessor@shrewsburyma.gov for more information. And the second announcement is from our Planning and Economic Development Department. They are seeking resident feedback on the economic development plan being developed for the town's key transportation corridors. The goal is to identify opportunities for new development, increase jobs, and grow the tax base with this development plan. Public input is essential to our town's future, so please continue, consider attending the meeting or filling out the survey that could be found on the town website. The in-person meeting is tomorrow, Wednesday, November nineteenth, twenty twenty-five, from four thirty to six P.M., or from six thirty to eight P.M. at the Shrewsbury Senior Center at ninety-eight Maple Ave.
Thank you. Any other? Item number...
Chair?
Yes.
Um, just wanted to note that Ms. Cassavant and I participated in office hours today. We did have two visitors, and I think that residents should certainly take us up on this opportunity to engage with us in, I think, a more intimate and more comfortable setting to talk about any concerns or have their questions answered. We hold office hours on the first Tuesday, before the first Tuesday meeting every month from five thirty to six thirty in the conference room across the hall.
There's this one in the drive.
Oh, I missed that, sorry. You want to take it?
Sure. There's an update to the Sharps disposal program. The drop-off location for the disposal of needles, lancets, and Epi pens has moved to the Fire Department Headquarters at eleven Church Road. The service is for Shrewsbury residents only, and a photo ID is required. Residents must use approved Sharps containers to ensure the Fire Department sterile system can safely process the material. Drop-off hours are Monday through Friday, eight A.M. to four thirty P.M., Saturday, nine A.M. to twelve P.M., and more information is available on the town's website.
Okay. Thank you. Item number four is the Town Manager's Report. Mr. Mizikar?
Good evening, board members. A couple updates for you. First, I just wanted to make sure everyone was aware, especially those in the public, that the Massachusetts Municipal Association recently published a report about local government finance. It's entitled "A Perfect Storm" and can be found on their website at MMA.org. I think it provides a good historical context and background to Proposition Two and a Half and some of the challenges that municipalities across the state experience associated with Prop Two and a Half. And one of the most interesting points for me was that it doesn't impact every community the same, and it has a lot to do with the type of community, whether you're urban, suburban, rural, whether you're a gateway city. So, it's an interesting read and hits home in a lot of ways with some of the challenges that we're facing here in Shrewsbury when it comes to the property tax levy and how much money we can raise and sustain services year over year. So, encourage everyone to go to MMA.org, and it's at the banner at the top of the website right now since they recently published it. I wanted to note that the Massachusetts Department of Revenue has announced the CPA Trust Fund Distribution for this year, and they have provided a match of sixteen point nine percent. This is about sixteen, almost seventeen thousand dollars greater for us than we predicted when we went to town meeting. We used fifteen percent as a conservative estimate, so we will have a little bit of additional funding available to us for future projects. And sticking with the CPA, the Community Preservation Committee recently did a really nice job through their workshop in walking individuals through their new online portal for submitting funding applications in our Open Gov system. And individuals are able to review that recording and get up to speed on how to submit an application to CPC from the Shrewsbury Media Connection YouTube page, so it's a quick tutorial on how to submit a successful application. Then just had a couple more things. So, I'm really happy to report that Centec North, the Allen Farm property that Shrewsbury owned for about twenty years, and we were really diligent in finding a good partner to develop that site through the Shrewsbury Development Corporation. That property now is fully leased out. So, recently Columbia Tech, which is a leading provider of engineering design for manufacturing and system assembly, manufacturing services, is taking over a hundred thousand square feet within the industrial park. And I do want to just take a step back and acknowledge that it has been a really good partnership with Northbridge, who bought the property from the town. They could have easily leased it out to, you know, uses that would have had a greater impact on the town and not provided as high-paying jobs to the community, but they really have achieved what we would consider probably the best vision for the property, really high-end opportunities in manufacturing and light industrial activities going on within those spaces, and now they're fully leased out just a couple years after construction, so I'm really proud of that. And then finally, I just want to provide a couple updates regarding some major transportation and roadway improvements that are going on in town. We recently, earlier this week, met with, yesterday met with MassDOT in our kind of annual meeting that we get together that Representative Kane orchestrates for us. So, I have some critical updates for you on some major projects. So, Route twenty, the project from South Street to Valenti Drive is on schedule to be advertised this coming June and awarded in the fall of twenty twenty-six and start construction in the spring of twenty twenty-seven. So, that's a critical project to make critical safety improvements from South Street to Valenti Drive, and the project's final revised estimate is over forty-six million dollars. So, I have to thank DOT, Congressman McGovern, Rep. Kane, Senator Moore, for all their diligence in making sure this project continued to be at the top of the list and has forty-six million dollars to provide these critical improvements. That's certainly well above the initial cost estimates when we started working on this project on this section just a couple years ago. Another important improvement on Route twenty between Grafton Street in the area of Purinton and one forty, Mass. DOT has twenty-five percent design on lane reconfigurations there. That's a, that's out in the future and may not be advertised until twenty twenty-nine, but they continue to work on improvements in the area of Flynn's Truck Stop and Brody's because of challenges associated with Grafton Street and that light. The Route twenty, Lake Street, will be getting some signal phasing changes and lane striping changes. The current left-only lane will be changed to left turn and the through lane, and the right lane will move to a dedicated right turn. And then finally, the bridge over two ninety at La Quint Sigman is slated for massive resurfacing and reconstruction this summer. It's a thirteen million dollar project that will start this spring and continue throughout the construction season. And Route twenty, Grafton Street in Worcester, which experiences flooding and ponding and in high rain events or high total rain events, is going to, there's going to be some stormwater infrastructure improvements starting in the spring of twenty twenty-six. The reason I mention this project that is in Worcester is because the stormwater work and upgrade of the stormwater pipe will actually continue from Worcester into Shrewsbury, and we will experience lane restrictions in both directions. It will be down to one lane through most of the upcoming summer. So, I know that was a lot, but a lot of critical improvements, a great partnership with DOT that we have to keep our projects on their radar and vice versa, so we can address critical traffic safety needs as they come up, especially along the Route twenty corridor. Happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Board members, any questions or comments?
Just one about the work that you mentioned on the two ninety overpass over Lake Quinsig. So, is that the same area where they get the runoff that I hear about causing, like, so much runoff coming off of the highway into the lake? Is that the spot, or is it the bridge?
So, the bridge currently doesn't have any kind of stormwater infrastructure underneath it, but that was a question that was asked at the meeting yesterday, whether that will be addressed, and they didn't have immediate answer, but it's on their radar, and we'll make sure that they do provide that infrastructure if possible.
Okay, thanks.
Sure.
I think just a quick one from me. Appreciate you uplifting the MMA report. Wondering if that could be shared with our partners on the Finance Committee and town meeting members as well?
Absolutely.
Certainly very optimistic article title.
"A Perfect Storm."
"A Perfect Storm." Thank you, Mr. Mizikar. Item number five is public comment pursuant to Select Board Policy Thirty-One. We have not had any residents sign up this evening, and we do encourage residents to let us know if they're interested in speaking at a future meeting. Board members, I'm going to take one item out of order, given that we have someone who's here rather than have her wait, so we're going to move to item number nineteen, which is to review and act on AMF Bowling Centers, Inc., DBA Bolero for a change of manager, all alcohol license. If you could please come forward and have a quick seat.
Thank you.
So, board members, you have the application materials in your drive. There are no changes to the operations of the business. This application is being submitted to update the manager associated with the alcohol license, and Kristen Brown is the new manager and is here to answer any questions that the board may have. Do you want to quickly introduce yourself?
Sure. My name is Kristen Brown. I am a recent promotion to the General Manager over at the Bolero four oh five Boston Turnpike in Shrewsbury. I've been with the company for about two years, over at this location about a year and a month, so, yeah.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Board members, any questions, comments, discussion?
So, there's no, there's any real change, other than the manager?
Just the manager.
Yeah.
Just you, okay. If nothing else, I'll just hand a motion.
I move the board approve the change of manager application of AMF Bowling Centers, Inc., DBA Bolero.
Second.
Ms. Cassavant?
Aye.
Ms. Conlin?
Aye.
Mr. Garcia?
Aye.
Mr. Richards?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Motion passes. Thank you for coming in, appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a great rest of your meeting.
Sure you don't want to stick around.
Come see me at the bowling alley.
Moving back to item number six, which is to review and discuss the fiscal year twenty twenty-seven revenue manual and budget process. And Alex Martinez, who is our Director of Budget and Financial Planning, is here to walk us through, Mr. Mizikar, anything before?
No, Alex will lead us through, thank you.
Good evening, board members. Looking forward to presenting an overview of the fiscal year twenty-seven revenue manual.
I just realized you don't have a mic, do you?
Those.
Oh, does it work? Okay. There you go.
So, the revenue manual officially kicks off our budget process and represents our initial best estimate of the revenues the town will generate for fiscal year twenty-seven, which covers July one, twenty twenty-six, through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven. Town staff are currently working on FY twenty-seven budget submissions, which will be due back to the Town Manager's Office in mid-December. The next public financial milestone will be the release of the Town Manager's recommended budget, which is fiscal projection one, by February seventeenth, twenty twenty-six. For fiscal year twenty-seven, our total projected revenue is one hundred and ninety-five million, six hundred and fifty-six thousand, fifty-seven dollars. This represents an increase of about three point eight million, or two point zero one percent, over the FY twenty-six budget as of the fall special town meeting. I'd like to note that this projection does not yet include specific project-related funding, like CPC revenue, warrant articles, or project closeouts, and those will be further identified as the budget development progresses. So, property tax is the primary source of revenue for virtually every Massachusetts municipality. Insurance reproperty taxes represent about sixty percent of the annual revenues, and the FY twenty-seven tax levy assumes a two point five percent increase over fiscal year twenty-six in accordance with Proposition Two and a Half, plus one million, three hundred fifty thousand in new growth. An additional eight million, twelve thousand, four hundred ninety-seven dollars is added to the tax levy to cover the cost of debt service for projects approved by the voters as debt exclusions. And I'd just like to note that in fiscal year twenty-six, the last payment for the fire facilities project will be made. State aid is the second-largest revenue source, making up approximately fourteen point six percent of our revenue, and state aid is the restricted and unrestricted aid that's provided to municipalities through the state budget. The governor typically releases the initial state budget in late January of each year, and prior to that release, we've applied a conservative one percent increase to state aid. We do anticipate making some adjustments to this category with the release of the state budget, as some of the line items in state aid have been trending well above the one percent mark, specifically Chapter Seventy, which is school aid. The town of Shrewsbury operates four utility funds, water, sewer, stormwater, and solid waste, and utility revenue consists of the funds generated through rates and fees of those services. Water and sewer rates are reviewed regularly by the Water Commissioners, the Select Board, as well as the Sewer Commissioners, to ensure that the fees generated accurately support the cost to supply the specific services to the community. The stormwater enterprise is operated under the MS four permit, and the cost to comply with the MS four permit is about two million dollars a year. This includes mitigation efforts such as catch basin cleaning and street sweeping. And lastly, the solid waste enterprise fund raises funds through bag fees and bulk waste sticker fees to offset the total cost of the enterprise fund. It is the goal to offset by about fifty percent, with the remaining fifty percent being covered by the tax levy. A bag fee increase did take effect on July first, twenty twenty-five, but given some challenges and changes in the market, the five-year fee model may require further review to ensure its continued sustainability, given recent challenges and declining bag sales. On May sixteenth, twenty eighteen, the Public Education Governmental Access Programming and Services Agreement, also known as PEG, was signed between the town of Shrewsbury and the nonprofit Shrewsbury Media Connection, who's providing the streaming service right now, for the purpose of the provision of PEG access programming. The revenue for this fund is comprised of the franchise fees that's collected for use of the town's cable television, public education, and governmental access enterprise. And per the May twenty twenty-four agreement, the town will provide four point five percent of gross annual revenue from cable operations to provide this programming. These funds are recovered through revenue collected via the contract terms of the town's cable franchise license granted to Selco. The FY twenty-seven revenue estimate assumes about a five percent decline, given the ongoing trend of users cutting the cord and switching to streaming services. The next... The next revenue category is local receipts, and these are locally-generated revenues other than real and personal property taxes. This is the most elastic revenue stream that the town has and the most dependent on economic conditions. The largest category within local receipts is motor vehicle excise, which is a locally-imposed tax assessed to owners of motor vehicles registered to an address within the town of Shrewsbury. The next category, other excise tax, is comprised of meals, hotel, and cannabis excise, and I would note that the bulk of this million dollars is in meals and cannabis. We currently have no hotels in town, so that revenue is just generated from short-term rentals, such as Airbnbs. Landfill revenue is an annual fee collected in monthly installments based on materials deposited into the landfill by wheel operator, and the volume of ash disposal has remained pretty steady year over year, but in fiscal year twenty-four, the landfill began collecting ash from sogus, and it's estimated that one hundred percent of sogus's ash will be delivered to the landfill by fiscal year twenty-eight. Departmental fees are fees collected by various departments, such as licenses through the Select Board, permits for activities regulated through town bylaws, marriage certificates, building permits, et cetera. Interest income is income generated from investment income, and this has been an extremely strong source of revenue over the past few years, as you can see. We work very closely with our investment firm, Bartholomew, to forecast this category. You'll note that rental income is not budgeted, but in prior years, we do collect. This is very minimal, mostly fees collected from a mobile home assessment, and it's not significant enough to budget. The last category, remaining revenue sources, are various pilot payments from the Shrewsbury Housing Authority, street betterments, supplemental taxes on new construction, E-rate discounts for schools and libraries, and Selco's reimbursement to the town for gas and oil. So, again, to summarize, local receipts is the most elastic and variable category. I would like to note that in the past, we've typically increased this line by about three percent annually. However, over the past five years, local receipts have performed thirty-one percent better than budgeted, so meaning on average, the town has generated approximately three point eight million dollars more in local receipts than what was budgeted. So, taking this into consideration and doing some more detailed analysis, we're proposing to increase local receipts by about thirteen point five percent over fiscal year twenty-six and feel very confident, given the trends in recent years of this category. So, this next slide just shows that budget to actual, from fiscal year twenty-one to fiscal year twenty-five, and just how incrementally local receipts have been performing very well. So, the next source of revenue is free cash, and free cash represents the portion of general fund surplus revenue that's unrestricted and available for appropriation by town meeting. These funds, once certified, may be used to support supplemental appropriations throughout the year, to support the ensuing fiscal year's budget, to reduce the tax levy, or to serve as emergency reserves. As of July one, twenty twenty-five, the town's free cash certified balance was thirteen million, three hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars, at sixty-three dollars. At this point in time, we're proposing the use of three point seven million dollars in free cash. This includes two million dollars for the town's capital improvement plan, one million dollars in funding to start up the emergency medical services program, and seven hundred thousand dollars in various annual warrant article requests, including funding for Shrewsbury Youth and Family Services, contribution to the General Stabilization Fund, and contributions to the Insurance Trust Fund. The town has two stabilization funds, the general stabilization and the override stabilization. The general stabilization fund is the town's main reserve fund designated to provide financial stability for all aspects of town operations, while improving the town's creditworthiness and flexibility. The current balance of the general stabilization fund is about eight point six million dollars. With the passage of the twenty twenty-one operational override, the town established a special-purpose override stabilization fund, and the creation of this fund provides a financial mechanism to manage the approach of the Select Board and School Committee to the town in prolonging the duration of the override. The current balance in the override stabilization fund is about nine point five million dollars. There is no proposed use of either general or override stabilization dollars in the FY twenty-seven budget at this time. However, we are proposing to deposit three hundred thousand dollars into the general stabilization to maintain policy level. The next revenue category are funds to reduce the levy, and what this is, is a portion of free cash and revenues received from Selco to further reduce the tax rate and offset burden to taxpayers, and this is being held level with the FY twenty-six budget. Revenues within the other available funds category includes those related to the sale of cemetery lots, debt service revenue from Selco, and any internal account transfers. This does not include anticipated CPC revenue in projects at this time, but as the FY twenty-seven budget is further developed, those aspects will be included in this category. So, just to summarize, as presented, the FY twenty-seven budget proposes an increase of approximately three point eight million dollars, or two point one, two point zero one percent greater than the FY twenty-six budget. The development of the FY twenty-seven budget is in the initial stages, with town departments currently working on budget submissions, and we look forward to keeping you all updated as the budget progresses, and I'm happy to answer any questions at this time.
Great, thank you, Alex. Board members, any questions or comments?
Greg raised his hand.
Mr. Richards?
Yeah, I think one comment. I guess I just have some concerns long-term on the funding model for, you know, Shrewsbury Media Connection, where, I know they only said a five percent decline, but I worry that that, if that increases and maybe is more of a ten or fifteen, and we're asking more of them, and I think they provide an extremely valuable service for transparency and whatnot, I think we just need to look at maybe a model of an alternate, longer-term funding strategy to ensure the viability of that service.
Agreed.
That's something we've discussed in the past more than once, right, as we keep watching the revenue from the cable decline. You know, just given what I'm seeing online, I think that we may have a number here that's a little bit higher as people cut the cord because they aren't necessarily satisfied with the cable service that they're receiving. I mean, I understand it's not the fault of Selco, right, that they are doing what they can to address needs, but I'm concerned about this number also.
So, as we get further in the budget process, model some alternatives and longer-term considerations?
Yes.
Any other comments or questions?
I'll do one other, if it's okay.
Yep.
And I guess it's just a question for Mr. Mizikar. Is there a possibility that, I think we've discussed a little bit too, this is all about the revenue for the budget, but I, is there an update on expenditures in a future meeting that you could be providing to the community as well?
Yeah, absolutely. So, as we start to receive departmental budget proposals, we will share, kind of pre-decisional before we publish the annual budget in February, starting at your first meeting in January. So, we'll start to highlight what we're seeing on the expenditure side of things, how it lines up. how it lines up with uh the expenditure um program associated with the the override agreement and the revenues that we have to make sure that everything remains in line, or talk about challenging decisions that we may have to make uh where departments are requesting more than we have uh available revenues for. I think, you know, if if I could, you know, just just some highlights within uh this budget, the the biggest one being that we're not using any of the override stabilization fund. And this will be the FY twenty seven would be the sixth year uh since the override passed. And that is, you know, directly enabled by our ability to increase local receipts within the revenue model based upon the strong performance that we've received and experienced, especially within investment income and motor vehicles. So um, we'll we'll definitely still have some expenditure side challenges, and we'll keep the board up to date on that, but uh and the 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 revenues put us in a good spot with regards to the long-term fiscal stability uh for the model that we put in place in twenty twenty one.
You know, we discussed in our workshop the need to really help the community continue to understand our stabilization model, strategy, intent, to recognize that the reason that we haven't utilized these stabilization funds yet is because we have been sort of working within the budget and not spending excess revenue in order to smooth the impact for taxpayers. I know a lot of people say, oh, I just know you're going to ask for another override. We're we're very clear, there will be another ask for an override. That is the intention of the model, but we're doing everything we can to have um as much time between those asks as possible and to use, you know, the funds when, you know, we have additional revenues that maybe were higher than we projected, um that it is used to, again, you know, benefit the taxpayers in prolonging the need for a future increase.
You know, I note that we're not withdrawing, but we're also not contributing to the override stabilization. And so um we're kind of at that point now where the next budget cycle, we would be drawing down on the stabilization. I think once that starts to happen, it it will be depleted rather quickly. Um, and we want to try to make sure that we aim for the sweet spot in when we ask that next question. Right? It may be that there are still dollars left in the override stabilization account when we determine it's the right time to ask the question, um, based on how um the amount, right, the amount of the override ask will fluctuate based on when we ask it. And that also means that the impact will fluctuate on taxpayers. Um, so I think this is just a really important number to sort of look at and and line item to look at, because I think there might be an expectation that we would spend the override stabilization account down to zero before we considered another override ask. But if we did that, we would just be putting ourselves back in the situation of having these extreme swings in a tax bill because we would be asking for such a large amount to sort of plug a hole. What we're trying to do with this model, as the chair, I think, really said, is smooth uh the impact to taxpayers, but also provide uh reliable funding so that not only the municipal departments, but the schools know what to expect year over year and are planning for catastrophic reductions in services.
No, it's uh, we we heard that pretty loud and clear over the years, people were tired of the cliff. And they wanted greater stability. And I do think that, just a reminder to everyone, as as Alex pointed out, with the process, it is a long process, it's a very public and transparent process, and if you're wondering where the money is going, it is, it is all detailed, department by department, and and, you know, Kevin, to your point, we are continuously having to make some hard decisions based on departmental requests. But we recognize that, you know, the the hearings and the budget process, it's it's sort of long. And we talked also at our workshop about how do we distill this? How do we make the details available for those that want it, but how do we also provide, you know, a really clear sort of macro view of what is is behind the budget? And um in hopes that, you know, people will have a comfortable, not everyone will agree, but we can at least debate the merits of, you know, what you disagree with versus just a a perception that everything is being mismanaged and that's why you need an increase. Look forward to it.
All right, thank you. Appreciate it. Agenda item number seven is to review and act on the award of bond anticipation notes related to the PFOS treatment plant design. So this agenda item requests that we approve the award of one million in general obligation bond anticipation notes to fund the design of the PFOS treatment plant. This bond sale had two bidders with Oppenheimer and Company offering the lowest bid at two point six five percent re-offering yield. Um, as a reminder, town meeting has authorized the select board to borrow up to eighteen point five million to fund the design and improvements to the municipal water system. Mr. Mizikar, if there's anything additional you want to note for the board?
No, uh, well, I do want to note one thing. So this is the um second time that we've reauthorized uh this uh short-term note. And we use this model um many times as we're planning for a project and finalizing design. So um in next year's budget proposal, we will uh look to incorporate this into permanent financing. And we'll utilize uh our ability to include this in the SRF uh s- um state revolving fund loan, if possible. If not, it will be permanently financed on its own. So um to date, we've only been um paying down interest and starting next year, we'll uh pay principal and interest and uh become part of our long-term debt schedule, which will be funded through the water rates.
May I ask, um, Mr. Mizikar, can you give us an update on the status of um construction and overall costs of the project?
Sure. So overall, cost of the project came in well under budget. Uh, we had sought a borrowing authorization and received it for eighteen and a half million. I think total construction cost is a little over fifteen million. And we um look to, in the near future, have a groundbreaking ceremony, so we haven't started any work yet. Um, but we're in a position that we are ready to do that within the next thirty to forty-five days. So we'll have a groundbreaking ceremony and kick the project off as the contractors mobilizing and beginning work. And then we'll have about eighteen to twenty months of construction.
Thank you. There's no other discussion, I will entertain a motion.
I move the board to um approve the award of the bond anticipa- anticipation notes related to the PFOS treatment plant design in the principal amount of one million dollars to Oppenheimer and Company.
Second.
Ms. Cassavant?
Aye.
Ms. Conlin?
Aye.
Mr. Garcia?
Aye.
Mr. Richards?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Motion passes. Thank you. Item number eight is to review and act to set senior plan health insurance rates for calendar year twenty twenty six. These are the rates for retiree health insurance for eligible retirees. The rate increases range from five to twelve percent, except for the Fallon Premier Plan, which will have no increase. The Fallon Central Plan will be discontinued, and all members currently enrolled will be transitioned to the Fallon Premier Plan. There are no questions. Take a motion.
I move that the board approve the calendar year twenty twenty six senior health insurance plan rates as presented and authorize the town manager to implement the rates effective January first, twenty twenty six.
Second.
Ms. Cassavant?
Aye.
Ms. Conlin?
Aye.
Mr. Garcia?
Aye.
Mr. Richards?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Motion passes. Items nine through thirteen are select board appointments to various boards and committees, so I just wanted to um a little background here. Historically, board members have ranked applicants in advance. And the last time we used that process was for the form of government study committee, which could have gone better. So I thought it was appropriate to rethink how we manage this process. Staff did provide a worksheet in advance, but without instructions to rank choices. After it went out, I asked Ms. Anderson to clarify that members could either indicate their choices in advance or wait until tonight. And those who submitted choices could still change them during the meeting. In the past, we have not displayed worksheets out of respect for applicants when multiple candidates are well qualified. We do not want our votes to reflect negatively on anyone. And we have also wanted to support independent and unbiased selection and avoid shadow voting. So despite good intentions, some feel this approach may lack transparency. So tonight, I suggest a different approach. Um, each position has its own worksheet. And I will ask each board member to confirm or make their choice. And since we don't have an excessive number of candidates, we can determine the majority vote without ranking. And if there are ties, then we would work it out here. As we get started, I mean.
So I'll move to appoint Lucas Remington to serve a two-year term on the Affordable Housing Board of Trustees, set to expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty seven.
Are we, I think we, okay, do we know, so?
I don't have the voting sheets.
Okay.
I'm just kicking.
Yeah, so why don't we, um, do you have them that you can share?
The same one I shared with you?
Yeah. So for the affordable housing, Lucas Remington did receive four uh votes. And Anad Shamar received one vote, so Lucas Remington would have the majority votes. So that motion would be appropriate unless there's any uh discussion or changes by board members.
I'll second that motion.
Ms. Cassavant? Thank you. Ms. Cassavant?
Aye.
Ms. Conlin?
Aye.
Mr. Garcia?
Aye.
Mr. Richards?
No.
Myself, aye. Motion passes four to one. Item number ten is to review and act to appoint one member to the Community Preservation Committee to serve a three-year term set to expire on June thirtieth, twenty twenty eight. There were two candidates for this. And Mr. San Karian received five votes. So if there is no discussion, I would.
I, I move to appoint um Mr. San Karian to serve a three-year term to the Community Preservation Committee, set to expire on June thirtieth, twenty twenty eight.
Second.
Ms. Cassavant?
Aye.
Ms. Conlin?
Aye.
Mr. Garcia?
Aye.
Mr. Richards?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Motion passes. Thank you. Item number eleven is to review and act to appoint two members to the Historic District Commission to one seat with a one-year term set to expire on June thirtieth, twenty twenty six, and one seat with a three-year term set to expire on June thirtieth, twenty twenty eight. So this is one that requires discussion. Um, there were two candidates. We each voted for two, so there's five. We just need to determine um which candidate has the one-year term and which one has the three-year term.
I can't see the numbers. Sorry, I have realized lately that I can't see.
Oh. They both got five votes because we voted for two. There wasn't an indication of vote for one for one year, vote for one for three years, so.
So I'm gonna move that we appoint Andy McIsaac to a three-year term with this set to expire on June thirtieth, twenty twenty eight.
I'll second that.
Ms. Cassavant?
Aye.
Ms. Conlin?
Aye.
Mr. Garcia?
Aye.
Mr. Richards?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Motion passes.
And then I'll make a second motion to appoint Paul Little to a one-year term on the Historic District Commission um set to expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty six.
Second.
Ms. Cassavant?
Aye.
Ms. Conlin?
Aye.
Mr. Garcia?
Aye.
Mr. Richards?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Motion passes. Item number twelve is to review and act to appoint one member to the Sustainability Committee to serve a three-year term set to expire on June thirtieth, twenty twenty eight. Mr. Jarvey received five votes. So if there's no other discussion.
So I move that we appoint Scott Jarvey to a one-year, oh, to a three-year term set to expire on June thirtieth, twenty twenty eight to the Sustainability Committee.
Second.
Ms. Cassavant?
Aye.
Ms. Conlin?
Aye.
Mr. Garcia?
Aye.
Mr. Richards?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Motion passes. Item number thirteen is to review and act to appoint one member to the Zoning Board of Appeals to serve a one-year term set to expire on March thirty-first, twenty twenty six. Megan Vincent received three votes, which would be the majority vote.
So I think if we, so Megan Vincent is currently an associate member of the ZBA. So that would mean that if she is appointed as a full member, that would open a vacancy, correct, for an associate member? That we would post for, what, the December meeting? Because I I was really torn between the two because I really do think that they're both very qualified, but I know just because uh Ms. Vincent's been sitting in on ZBA meetings, given that there, you know, is a vacancy there, and I watched her um contribute, that I support her being made a full member. But I would also be interested in knowing if Ms. Costella Weber would be interested in applying for the vacancy for the associate member. I know in the past, we've sort of asked those people who've applied if that'd be something that they'd be willing to be considered for.
I have the same question, so, thank you.
So I'll make a motion that we appoint Megan Vincent to the Zoning Board of Appeals to serve a one-year term set to expire on March thirty-first, twenty twenty six.
Second.
Ms. Cassavant?
Aye.
Ms. Conlin?
Aye.
Mr. Garcia?
Aye.
Mr. Richards?
No.
Myself, aye. Uh, motion passes four to one. Item number fourteen is to review and act to ratify the signature of the chair for the Green Communities Grant Annual Report. We are required to submit an annual report documenting project process, energy savings, and compliance with program requirements to be eligible for grant funding to support municipal energy efficiency and sustainability projects. This vote is for formal ratification of the chair's signature to ensure the town remains in good standing and eligible for future grant opportunities. Are any comments or questions? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion.
I just have, I'm sorry, I have one just quick question. Kevin, what what has we received as part of this grant program historically? Have we received grants under this before?
The Green Communities Program, yes.
Yes.
I don't know, the, it's hundreds of thousands of dollars.
Yeah, typ- typically, it's been about a hundred and eighty to a hundred and ninety thousand, and I think the first, the first year that we received it was two thousand nineteen. Um, I think we've done, I think this is our fifth cycle because we missed a year. Almost a two-year period between grants at one point.
I move the board ratify the chair's signature on the town of Shrewsbury's Green Community Grant Annual Report as submitted to the Massachusetts Department of Energy Resources.
Second.
Ms. Cassavant?
Aye.
Ms. Conlin?
Aye.
Mr. Garcia?
Aye.
Mr. Richards?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Motion passes. Item number fifteen is to review and act to ratify the signature of the chair for the MSBA Design Enrollment Certification for the High School Project. The chair of the select board has executed the design enrollment certification on behalf of the town to meet MSBA submission deadlines. It states that the design of the proposed project at the Shrewsbury High School shall be based on an enrollment of no more than one thousand nine hundred and forty students. And the board is now asked to formally ratify the chair's signature to confirm the town's continued participation in the MSBA process and maintain eligibility for reimbursement consideration in this enrollment. Um, estimate was reviewed and approved, I believe, Ms. Cassavant, by the Building Committee?
Yes.
So I move approval.
Second.
Ms. Cassavant?
Aye.
Ms. Conlin?
Aye.
Mr. Garcia?
Aye.
Mr. Richards?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Motion passes. Item number sixteen is to review and act on winter maintenance of unaccepted subdivision streets to be plowed by developers pursuant to Select Board Policy sixteen. Pretty much a routine annual matter. Pretty much a routine annual matter, any...
I routinely let everyone know that I live on a private road, that the street gets plowed by the town.
Same here.
I live on a public way.
You don't have to give any, no explainer for you. So I move approval.
Second.
Ms. Cassavan?
Aye.
Ms. Conlin?
Aye.
Mr. Garcia?
Aye.
Mr. Richards?
Aye.
Myself, aye, motion passes. Item number 17 is to review an act to consider the retention or sale of real, of real property after tax foreclosure at 15 Maple Avenue, Assessor's Plate 22, Plot 151. So after several years of proactive work, the town has foreclosed on this property, otherwise known as Empire Dry Cleaners, due to a chronic lack of payment of taxes and utility fees. Under the revised general laws authorizing tax foreclosure, the Select Board must decide what the town intends to do with the property now that is under our ownership. So, board members, the specific decision for us tonight is whether we will retain or sell the property, and I would first like Mr. Mizikar to speak to the environmental contamination concerns to help us in making this decision.
Sure. So, starting with environmental contamination, there is something in place called a, what's the ACF?
AUL, Activity and Use Limitation.
Yeah, Activity Use Limitation. So that is the most mature finding level by the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection, meaning that all future activities will be subjecting and fall under the jurisdiction of this AUL, and it will dictate and complicate what particular uses may be permissible for short and long durations on that site. So the good news is, it has been through the full 21E process, which is the environmental, 21E is the section of the state law that governs environmental contamination of properties. So we know and understand what the challenges are associated with the property, and what we would need to do as an owner, or what another future owner would be allowed to do with the property. So it provides great clarity that it's already at this point. There's minimal risk, there is volatile organic compounds within the soil because of the operation of the dry cleaner there, and spills associated with it, and also a fuel oil release on the site, and, but that risk is mitigated because it's been through the, the DEP process as far as it has been. So this is not a property that would require significant investment to quote-unquote "clean up." There's just ongoing mitigation that would have to be done depending on the type of use, and that ongoing mitigation could be nothing if it's, you know, a very minimal use and there's no structure on the property, but if there is a structure, then it would require basically what is subsurface depressurization, which means kind of like an industrial-sized radon system that would take the VOCs that are present within the soils and vent them above that habitable levels of any structure that's there. So there is some concern because it was, does have environmental contamination, but it's been greatly mitigated by the studies that have been done. We would like to do, if we retain it, a little bit more investigation on it, just to be safe and get some updates, but there's monitoring wells throughout the neighborhood and well-documented matters that exist there. Can have Mr. Baldinger walk through a couple slides, just to, to clarify a couple more things on a property value and, and things like that, if the Board is interested.
I think that would be great, thank you.
Sure. So, Mr. Mizikar went through the environmental actions, but a little history here. This property's been a dry cleaner from the 70s until the late 2010s or so, that it went out of business due to the environmental contamination and other reasons. The tax, town's tax title process in this parcel began more than 20 years ago. After years of non-payment and legal action, the land court entered a foreclosed judgment on October 7th of this year, and that judgment became final on November 6th, when no appeals, when no appeal was filed. The building itself is in poor condition, and given its location in the town center and the environmental constraints, as Mr. Mizikar laid out, the town needs to carefully evaluate the best path forward. Excellent. So, at the time of a foreclosure judgment was entered, the combined outstanding taxes, municipal charges, interest, and utility liens totaled just over $316,000. With the court costs and legal fees add at the judgment, the full amount owed is approximately $321,000. Shortly after that judgment, we contracted with a licensed appraiser, as required by the new law, and we received a final appraisal last week, valuing the property at $280,000. The appraisal tells us the property's market value, and it also shows the outstanding obligations exceed that value. Next slide. So, under the revised state tax title law, the Select Board must choose one of two legally-defined pathways. The town can either retain the property for municipal use, or it can dispose of the property through a structured sale process. That vote must occur by November 20th, which is day 45 from the judgment, so that's why we're, this is on the agenda this evening. We have already, as I mentioned, we have already completed the required appraisal, because we thought that value was important for your decision, and because the amount owed at judgment was higher than that value, there is no excess equity associated with the property, which simplifies the retention pathway, because it means the town would not need to issue any equity payment to the former owner, because that's what the new law requires. If the town votes to retain, to retain, the remaining steps involve issuing the required notices and completing the statutory accounting. If the town votes to sell, state law requires us to list the property with the licensed broker for up, by, by day 180 from judgment, and market it for up to a year, and then conduct a public auction if it doesn't sell. The auction must be run by a licensed auctioneer, and the minimum bid must be at least two-thirds of the appraised value. Either, either choice has a clear structured process associated with it for this new law. So, next slide. So, our recommendation at this stage is that the town retain the property. With the appraised value at $280,000, and the outstanding obligations exceeding that amount, we don't have any excess equity payments required to the previous owner, so, and it makes the retention pathway is, is fairly straightforward under the new law. Retaining the property right now does not commit the town to a specific end use. What it does is give us the ability to fully understand the environmental conditions, as Mr. Mizikar laid out, evaluate what can be built under zoning, and look carefully at both public and private redevelopment scenarios. The Planning and Economic Development Department is proposing an eight-month evaluation process that includes a SWOT analysis, a tax yield comparison, a build-out analysis, and community engagement. At the end of that process, the town will be in a much better position to decide the highest and best use of the site, with a full understanding of the costs, opportunities, and then communities' priorities. Just want to have, questions, glad to answer them.
I, I have a question. If, if we decide that we retain it, and we do all this analysis, and then later decide that we do want to sell the parcel, my understanding is that we can't make a profit off of this based on the laws around this process. So, if it's valued at 280 and we sell it for 300, essentially, does that additional profit go back to the original owner?
Yes, the ex, equity would have to be paid out. Literally, if, if you retain it, decide to retain, then change your mind at some point, we'd have to go through the legal process as laid out, like listed for a year, that sort of thing, and then ultimately...
But we would only sell it for its, its value, not above its value?
Well, the point of comparison would be the taxes owed, not the appraised value.
I see.
So we'd have to sell it for greater than $316,000.
If we did, then it would have to be the difference between the back taxes, okay, thank you. Not suggesting that, I just want to understand sort of longer-term considerations.
I mean, we've had some time to think about this, we talked through in a workshop last week, you know, we do have time constraint, right, of the 60 days. I think there's a lot of movement right now in the town center, I'm starting to see a lot of momentum, and I know the hail block is, the apartments are rented, I believe, and, you know, the, the commercial spaces, I think, are also kind of getting close to rented, and...
First building permit was pulled today.
Okay, see, that's exciting. So I would be in favor of retaining this parcel. I know that, you know, I think there are people in the community who are anxious for an opportunity to share their vision for this parcel, and it's very small, but I think it, it's worth keeping it at this point. Just knowing that the, the environmental risks aren't going to overwhelm us, I think it's worth keeping it.
I know we don't know and can't guarantee it, but would there be potential grant opportunities for the demolition of the existing structure?
There could likely be. There's a lot of incentive for downtown revitalization, town center revitalization, and now that we're the owners of the property, since it is a brownfield site, we would be eligible for brownfield funding, which includes revitalization opportunities, whatever our vision is for the property. If we can substantiate that improves economic conditions, then we're eligible for those grants as well.
Now, here's a question for you. If we own it, and we like sell off this sign, which is kind of a Shrewsbury landmark, and somebody, if somebody wanted it, I don't know if they would, but that would not be deemed a, would that be deemed some sort of profit from it that we would have to be? Again, it doesn't seem like it would be based on the amount of, of taxes or anything, but I was just curious.
Yeah, I think we'd have to track it, just in case we ever decided to sell the full property if, if we do that, but I, I, we'll probably have to account for all that income that we receive.
I'm sure someone would be interested in that sign.
I think they would be.
The way someone wanted the Edgemere Drive-In sign, or the, yeah, didn't that get sold somewhere?
It did.
Yeah.
So there you go.
It's owned by someone else, okay. I agree with Ms. Cassavan, I would prefer to retain it, if nothing else, to look at, you know, whether there's a parking opportunity or something else that might benefit the, the revitalization in, in our town center.
Yeah, I, I agree with the recommendation to retain the property. I think that there has been a lot of momentum in the downtown and a lot of investment, and I think that this presents us with an exciting opportunity to engage with the community about what their vision for the site would be. I, I know several months ago, the Planning and Economic Development Department did like a walk through the downtown to talk about some of the mobility challenges, and look at ways to, or explore ways to support multimodal transportation through the downtown, and I, I do think that this opportunity here could help us, could, could support their work in that area. So I just think overall, this is a great opportunity.
I have nothing to add, really, just, I agree with the recommendation to retain the parcel. I think there are a lot of opportunities that, as small as it is, I think it's a quarter acre, there are some opportunities to sort of supplement all of the movement we're seeing in downtown right now.
Any other comments? If not, move to, to the motion.
I move, as provided under MGL Chapter 60S, 64A8B, that the town retain the property located at 15 Maple Avenue, Assessor's Plate 22, Plot 151, acquired by the town through the issuance of a foreclosure judgment by the land court on October 7th, 2025, in docket number 23TL000090.
Second.
Ms. Cassavan?
Aye.
Ms. Conlin?
Aye.
Mr. Garcia?
Aye.
Mr. Richards?
Aye.
Myself, aye, motion passes. Agenda item number 18 is to review an act on the address change request of Thomas Fiore to change 890 Boston Turnpike to 882 Boston Turnpike. So under Policy 29, the Select Board is required to approve address change, address changes involving commercial properties. It is our understanding that this business has been using the 882 Boston Turnpike for more than 60 years, and town staff does not have any concerns with the formal address change. So...
Move through.
Second.
Ms. Cassavan?
Aye.
Ms. Conlin?
Aye.
Mr. Garcia?
Aye.
Mr. Richards?
Aye.
Myself, aye, motion passes. Item number 20 is to review an act to authorize the town manager to execute a quitclaim deed from Polte Homes of New England LLC to the Town of Shrewsbury for the transfer of a portion of a parcel of land located at 33 through 69 Green, Green Street. This parcel is being conveyed to the town for the future construction of a public way, consisted with, consistent with the amended and restated development agreement between the town and Polte, and so the approval of this deed formalizes the town's acquisition of the parcel and supports our long-term roadway design and improvements along the Green Street corridor. Mr. Mizikar, anything additional?
Just note that the, the town is not paying anything, and this is a donation of land as part of that agreement.
Take a motion.
I move that the Board authorize the town manager to execute the quitclaim deed from Polte Homes of New England LLC for the parcel located at 3369 Green Street.
Second.
Ms. Cassavan?
Aye.
Ms. Conlin?
Aye.
Mr. Garcia?
Aye.
Mr. Richards?
Aye.
Myself, aye, motion passes. Item 21 is to review an act on the one-day beer and wine license request of JT Ethier, Greater Good Imperial Brewing Company for the Shrewsbury Yuletide Market located at 5 Church Road on December 6, 2025, from 12:00 PM to 9:00 PM.
Move approval.
Second.
Ms. Cassavan?
Aye.
Ms. Conlin?
Aye.
Mr. Garcia?
Aye.
Mr. Richards?
Aye.
Myself, aye, motion passes. Item number 22 is to review an act on the one-day wine license request of Kathy McSweeney, Rotary Club of Shrewsbury, again, for the Yuletide Market on December 20, December 7th, 2025, from 4:00 PM to 9:00 PM.
Couple of things on this one. So, first of all, the date is December 6th. It's right in some places and wrong in others.
Oh, thank you, I didn't...
That's okay.
I didn't pick up on that.
I'm not sure.
So, I can speak to that. So, I, going back through the application today, we learned that the application was put in for December 7th.
Okay.
I called Ms. McSweeney this evening, we made an administrative change within the OpenGov system, and it is December 6th that they're requesting for the Yuletide Market.
So the other thing, so I'm also a Rotary Club member, so I've also been talking with Ms. McSweeney. The, the hours here, and I did check with Mr. Mizikar over the weekend when I noticed the error, reflect the hours of past Yuletide Markets, but this year's Yuletide Market actually goes from 3:00 to 7:00. So, my request would be that we adjust these hours to be reflective of what Greater Good is asking for, which is the 12:00 to 9:00 PM. And then Ms. McSweeney also said that she sent the insurance form...
Yep.
Like, recently.
Yeah, we received all.
Okay.
We have all the documentation.
Very good. So with all that, I move that we approve the one-day wine license request of Kathy McSweeney, Rotary Club of Shrewsbury, for the Yuletide Market located at 5 Church Road on December 6, 2025, from 12:00 PM to 9:00 PM.
Second.
Ms. Cassavan?
Aye.
Ms. Conlin?
Aye.
Mr. Garcia?
Aye.
Mr. Richards?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Motion passes. I'm going to come back to Agenda Item 23. Under Correspondence, Item Number 24, we have an email dated October 28th, 2025, from Carrie Shea, 11th Worcester District, regarding a letter from Representative Kane on 7 Boston Turnpike. We appreciate Representative Kane's efforts to communicate with the property owner regarding this vacant commercial building. Item Number 25 is an email dated October 30th, 2025, from Ruth Anderson, 100 Maple Avenue, regarding a change of residential address, so noted. Email date, Item Number 26 is an email dated October 31st, 2025, from Brian Hogley, 22 Birchbrush Road, regarding Ross and Hill's multi-use concern. So thank you, Mr. Baldinger, for responding to Mr. Hogley. Item Number 27 is an email dated November 8th, 2025, from Barbara Kikkam, Precinct 2, regarding deny requests for waiver of $4 million in fees. This is a ZBA matter and not under the purview, I'm sorry, that's a planning board matter.
No, it's ZBA.
ZBA, sorry, it is ZBA, not under the purview of this board. Item Number 28 is an email dated November 13th, 2025, from Holly Luck, 98 Maple Avenue, regarding COA generous donation. regarding COA generous donation. The town is most grateful to Chief Joseph, Joseph for his five thousand dollar donation, which will be used for the senior center food pantry. Board members, are there any, any discussion regarding correspondence? Nope, I was going to go to that next.
Oh, okay.
And then lastly, Agenda item number twenty-nine is a ZBA decision, so noted. So back to Agenda nine, item twenty-one. Sorry, I'm like, finding it difficult to talk at the end of the evening. The Board will now consider entering executive session in accordance with the Open Meeting Law, Mass. General Law, Chapter thirty-A, Section twenty-one-A six,